United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom. If we may stand in a moment of silence for all the victims of December 7, 1941, please. Thank you. One call please.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. McCormick is excused, Ms. Gilbert.
Present.
Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Mr. Belisco is excused, also intendant is Mayor George Brown, Ministerate Attorney McCormick, City Attorney Tim Henry, Assistant City Clerk Tracy Smith, Administrative Assistant Lisa Smith-Libbo. Good evening, welcome to tonight's regular session of council. Please turn off all cell phones. Following our examples of some important council rules, they are not intended to be a complete list. Please adhere as closely as possible to the five-minute speaker presentation time limit. No persons are allowed to address the council from beyond the rail except the Speaker at the dais who has the floor. The chairperson shall preserve order and decorum and prevent attacks on personalities. The chairperson shall determine all points of order. No person except city officers or representatives shall be permitted within the rail during any time without the express permission of the council. Council kindly asks the public, please vacate the building within ten minutes after the meeting adjourns. And finally, when members of the administration are speaking, please stand up and speak into the microphone.
Thank you. We have one resolution before us that involves the sale of a piece of land. Anybody wishing to speak on that piece of pending legislation? Mr. Troy.
Thank you. I see that this is a brief agenda. I'm wondering why there's no agenda by -- this is the mayor's agenda, I assume. I don't know why the council doesn't have any, but I guess that's a separate matter. I would just like to know, Mayor or Mr. McCormick, in terms -- I'm just talking -- I'm going to relate to this specific thing here, but in general, there seems to be a lack of transparency regarding land transactions or property transactions in the city, which is disturbing to me. Any lack of transparency in any aspect of government, especially local government, is disturbing. Now, I realize sometimes the details are not provided in the handout and you have to go online. But I called today and I don't think there were any other details available. I just wondered, Mayor, now since this is your agenda, that you arranged for the sale of a parcel, and I understand it's on Charles Street, which is a pretty upscale neighborhood, South Wilkes-Barre there, and your stomping grounds. And I just wondered how this transact -- I mean if you care to comment on it, or if you choose to leave me in the dark, that's fine too. But how are these $250 -- okay, I realize it's probably a pretty small parcel. Maybe you could give us the exact measurements and allow the public to know how Mr. Widler -- because if it was a $250 parcel of land on Charles Street, I might have been interested. Somebody else might have been. But how are these transactions -- first of all, how does the city in general come into these acquisitions of land? How -- what are the circumstances that lend themselves to selling them to specific individuals? And why is this not, like, open for a bidding process? Well, maybe that's the long-term bidding process. But let's say, why is it not open to the public in general? How did Mr. Widler come into favor here to buy this parcel for what seems to be a very cheap price? I would like to know the dimensions of this. So if you could possibly, you know, enlighten us as to what happened here and allow us to know those sort of things, I would be grateful. And also with the $250, I always ask this whenever I see a land parcel, a land acquisition item on the agenda. Was this -- okay, I imagine it's only, you know, a few square feet, I don't know. But how is this figure arrived at? Was Mr. Anst -- did Mr. Anstad, as usual, have a role in this? Did he set the price? Or did you set the price? Or was this an offer that you can't refuse, I mean, given by Mr. Widler, you know, like in The Godfather? Kidding. So those are basically the things I'd like to know. Mr. Anstad, I would just like to get a word or two. I just generally think that we -- you as mayor ought to -- you may think favorably on his assessments or appraisals, appraisals I guess is a better word, of these land parcels. But I tend -- after seeing what the Sterling lot was, I think undersold for whatever it was, $400,000 or half a million dollars, $100,000 or half a million dollars. I think we have to, in general, call into question Mr. Anstad's ability to put a fair value on these appraisals. And I don't deny this might be fair, but, you know, several others have not been. So those are the questions I have, and I appreciate any answer you can give me. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, Sam, there's a couple things I'll say in response to your question. Yeah, first of all, the value set by John Anstad, you know, he's the certified assessor, he has the credentials.
He did set it?
Yeah, to, you know, to offer an opinion of value. Another thing is, we like to sell parcels like that in neighborhoods that are small and, you know, the city circuit doesn't need two adjoining property owners as often as we can. Mr. Widler is an adjoining property owner, and this will make his property line, it will give him a bigger yard. And a third reason, you know, which is always a consideration for us, there's really no benefit to the city owning properties, especially properties like these, because then we have to maintain them, the grass gets high, they get littered on, and we just don't have, you know, enough people to take care of all these parcels. So, you know, it's a win for us all the way around. You know, it's back on the tax rolls, it doesn't have to be maintained, you know, by us, you know, through the taxpayers, through taxpayer money. You know, so those are the things we look at most when we're, you know, selling city properties.
Any comment on how the city would come into acquisition of this? How the city would acquire this or other parcels?
No, and I would assume this is probably something that we've had for decades. Maybe we got it sometime post-flood when South Wilkes-Barre was, you know, redone and, you know, new lots were carved and made out. So I would guess, I'm not positive, but I would guess this is something we've owned for decades.
That was one of those instances there?
Right, and Mr. Widler approached us.
Oh.
Because as an adjoining property owner, he realized that was city property, and he came to us.
All right, thank you, Tim.
Okay, so now we have the consent agenda, which is the one resolution regarding the Charles Street lot. And the minutes, need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Brooks.
Second.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Aye. I'm a pirate, so I didn't --
Mr. Brooks, anything this evening?
Nothing since Tuesday, thank you.
Mr. McBride?
The only thing I have is, there was a street sweeper that went up East North Hampton Street yesterday. I'm not sure if it was the city or the sanitary authority, but the street wasn't posted or anything, so can we just -- That was my guess, but if you could just address that with them, I would appreciate it. Just because no one had their car moved or anything, so, thank you. That's all I have.
You know, I'm always amazed at how responsive your administration is. Tuesday, I brought up an issue with the fence and also sent an email regarding some litter and some other -- it's taken care of, it's just unbelievable. And I know I'm not the only one experiencing that, so I just want to thank you for being as responsive as you are. Some of these situations come to our attention, or we see them in our district and we report them, but we really appreciate the responsiveness. And it's amazing how quickly -- street signs go up, like, in two days, where there's a missing street sign or a stop sign or something. So just want to let you know that it's not unrecognized and it's certainly appreciated. And that's all that I have. So public discussion, we have Mr. Francis Wallace.
Public discussion.
If you would start with your name, sir, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city officials, and welcome guests. I'm E. Francis Wallace, and I live on Valley View Terrace. And I just came at a quest -- the only question I do have is the -- we all know that Scranton Joe passed the infrastructure bill, okay? I guess my question is, did the city that was named after John Wilkes and Isaac Berry get any of the money yet? And that's mainly my question. So if the city official, Mr. Mayor, or the councilors, or anybody would like to address that, I'd be appreciative of that.
That's the only question you had, sir?
Pardon?
That's the only question you had?
Yeah, that's the only one. My neighbor has other questions, but I told her to write it down and I'll come in. And I guess it's Mr. Brooks's, Terrain District C, I don't know for sure. But yeah, I appreciate that if you want to tell me that, address that topic.
Yes, sir, the infrastructure bill does not go to municipalities. It's directed through the state PENDOT. All states, they go through the Department of Transportation, so they are not a direct applicant. Wilkes-Barre is not a direct applicant, nor did we receive any direct funds.
Well, how does it get there? Does Mr. Pachinski got a petition, the DOT, to get his share to Wilkes-Barre?
No, no, there's no share that goes out. The PENDOT will choose projects that are presented, generally on a large scale, that would be presented. Now, if Wilkes-Barre had some type of a project that they felt would qualify, we could submit something. But it's not anything that gets distributed to the city, we don't have any control over it.
So you might not get any money, and you might not fix any of the roads or things like that. Well, I mean, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wallace, we're not going to go back and forth.
Okay, okay, sir.
I think your question was answered.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you. Mr. Troy?
I want to address, in a short time I could speak here, about the disturbing -- a few disturbing issues in the budget. I know the budget is passed and it's kind of a moot point. I don't know if Mr. Mayor Brown or Mr. McCormick or any of you three can answer my questions. I've uncovered a couple of things here that, let's say I've scrutinized, looked at a few items, my items on the budget, and I did talk about some of these things before. Didn't really receive a satisfactory answer. First of all, I didn't mention this before, but this has to be, in my knowledge, to my best of my knowledge, and perhaps Mayor or you three can answer it. This must be the first year that the city did not take out a tan, correct? In a long time? A tax anticipation note? I'm not sure if -- look, I'm not a financial expert. That says to me two things, Mayor. That I guess in part because of the ARP money that you used to balance the budget, which I didn't think was justifiable, but to drain the ARP fund to do that, I guess legitimately you were allowed to do that. Balance the budget, that is, with the ARP money, which I think could be used for better purposes. But I, you know, I don't think -- the fact that you didn't draw out a tan note, a tan, says to me that the city's in it, even though it's still, to me, a smoke and mirrors budget, that there's a lot in question here, says to me that the city is on pretty strong financial footing. Now, can you deny that or agree with it or? I'd like to know. Or maybe one of you three want to comment? I don't know if you're -- or Mr. McCormick. If that's the case, and I assume it is, taxes didn't increase. Property taxes, anyway. I don't know about the mercantile tax, because that says, according to this thing here, according to the revenue side of the budget that I have here, the mercantile tax revenue increased $100,000. To the best of my knowledge, it's still at 1%, where it started out in the 1990s and it never was increased. So I wonder where that $100,000 is coming from? Maybe that's just a projection our new budget manager put in there? Or maybe he made a mathematical error? We're going to have to maybe search around for $100,000? Or do you expect new businesses to open in the city? Maybe that's what it is. But don't forget, maybe there's a lot of KOZs in this city don't pay mercantile tax. A lot of people are delinquent in the mercantile tax. So I'm wondering where that $100,000 coming from? But I also like to know, I've uncovered something here very disturbing. Actually, there's two items, I don't think I'm going to be able to get to both of them. Per capita tax, very briefly. According to this, all you have here in this budget, an aligned item is a delinquent per capita tax, which Burckheimer collects, the school district issues the per capita tax, and the -- each individual in the city Wilkes-Barre pays, I think, $5, everybody who's over 18, from what I understand. But now I understood, and I think I mentioned this before, that every senior citizen is exempt from this per capita tax. That's the case. And if that is the case, I didn't know about it, I've been paying -- I'm 74. And I've been paying it for nine years, I never knew about it. I've talked to several people, it's not on the Burckheimer bill. The school district repudiates -- they don't want to do -- the solicitor there does not want to do anything about this in terms of making the public aware that senior citizens are exempt. So if senior citizens are exempt, then to me, okay, I'm not calling it a scam, but the city's getting some money from this per capita tax. It gets part of it from the -- that the school district Burckheimer collects, I don't know how much. The school district gets the lion's share of it, I don't know. But that, to me, is taking money in a false pretense, because there's some money that's gone back to the city in the form of this per capita tax. If, let's say, half of the people are senior citizens. The school district took in $172,000 on this tax last year. So I'm thinking maybe $80,000 of that is illegitimate, it should have been taken in, because at least half, as far as I know, half the people in the school district are senior citizens. They shouldn't have to pay this. And if that's the case, the city shouldn't be getting as much money as it is. I don't know how much it is, because there's no designation here. My other item, very quickly, I'll just say. I don't know, Tim, if you can recount for us, this is as far as I'm going to get, I guess, with this, because they aren't going to get granted any extra time. There are certain parameters. The rain tax, stormwater fee. Can I get an extra one minute to talk about?
Keep going, finish.
Can I go another minute?
Go ahead.
It's a disturbing factor, that's why I think we should -- I'm not just trying to air myself out. The stormwater fee that everybody pays for the so-called impervious part of your property. And the city must pay it, too. I thought the city might be exempt from it, and that's not the case. School district is not exempt from it. Kings and Wilkes, as far as I know, are not exempt from it. I don't know if they're paying it. But there are parameters that the city -- that the city gets this money back. If you could want to go look at the revenue side of the budget. A lot of money here, Mayor, Mr. McCormick, I think I called your attention to this before. An increase is expected of approximately $50,000 from the sanitary authority financial administration for next year. Now, that money comes, as far as I'm concerned, from the stormwater fee. A certain amount of -- I don't know what the percentage is. Certain percentage of the stormwater fee goes back to the city for stormwater maintenance and sewer blockages and so forth, right?
Okay, we'll stop you there, but I think --
But I'm just getting into the meat of it, Mr. Barrett.
I know you are. Anybody care to address anything?
I put you on the spot, Mayor, sorry.
No, you never put me on the spot, Sam. First of all, let's talk about the city, the budget. We've gone over this several times, Sam.
Uh-oh, go ahead.
Can I talk?
Sure.
First of all, we didn't take a tan out for the second year. Last year, we did not take one out, we saved roughly $60,000. This year, we did not take one out with the current interest rates. Over $120,000 we saved by not borrowing that money, because we didn't feel we needed it, okay? Secondly, no fee or tax increase this year, okay?
What's that again? I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't bring my hearing aid again.
Come on, Sam, you're -- Secondly, no tax or fee increase, okay, this year, just like last year, okay? So if you're asking me how the city's doing, the city is making sure that we provide the services we have to provide for the residents, the business owners. And we're happy to do that without a tax or fee increase again. And we're happy to do that without the necessity of taking out a tax anticipation note. If that doesn't make you happy, I can't help that, but I think it's pretty good city government to do that. Thirdly, you keep talking about the tax, rain tax. Federally mandated exam. It's not the city, it's not the county, it's not the state, it's a federal mandate. If you have an issue with the rain tax, I would say, talk to your congressman or your U.S. senator. We do not have control over that. It's a federal mandate.
I know that.
And that's -- well, you keep bringing it up, so I'm just telling you, it's a federal --
That's not what I brought up, Mayor.
It's a federal mandate. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, sir, thank you.
Mayor, I have a question. I would suppose that the fact that we don't need a tan is because we have better cash flow? That your administration has done a better job in allocating the cash and that it flows different, flows better, right?
Better fiscal management.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Anything else, council? No? Okay, motion for adjournment? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.